Okay, it's five thirty, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the special work session of the Atoma City Council to order, and if everybody agrees for the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance.
Pardon?
This flag.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Crystal, go ahead and take the roll.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Here.
Councilmember Vasu?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
The next item is to approve our agenda for tonight's work session as your motion to approve.
Let's do it.
Second.
You get that? Because I didn't.
I have Keith.
There are three people talking.
Yes.
Use me any way you want me.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Vasu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
The next item is to have open discussion tonight regarding the City of Atoma's boards and commissions with proposed changes which were suggested by council and also reviewed by legal counsel, and so at this point I'm gonna turn it over to Phil and see if he wants to kind of lead us through the discussion.
Yeah, so I've got some information up on the screen, I forwarded this out previously in regards to the information from the work session we had in late January, and we talked about boards and commissions, and some of the things that came from that was looking at all of the boards and commissions, and some of them are set by state statute as far as the membership, the terms, all of that information, but any of the other ones, the city council had talked about looking at increasing or reducing the membership to five, so there's some consistency across the various boards. That term would be four years, limit of two terms unless there was no qualified applicants, and it could potentially be a third term, review of residency requirements, and then there was no changes made to library board, board of adjustment, or waterworks board, as those are restricted by Iowa law and the housing authority is governed by its own set of regulations. So, the rest of the boards and commissions that we had were up for discussion. So, the attorney then had taken a look and drafted revisions that were consistent with those suggestions from that prior work session, and so wanted to be able for you all to see what it looked like in print, to see if that was still the desire that you had for all of the commissions. I know we've got Peter Ryder here representing Human Rights Commission, and we did receive a communication from another member expressing the interest of keeping that group at least at nine members. They've got a committee system set up of three committees, three members on each committee, and there are newer groups, so I know that at least there's one outlier that may be of interest. The language here will reflect the five members still, but that might be something that for review.
And the waterworks board is the only board that by statute requires it as a residency requirement, so that's gonna have to stay in place. You have to live in the city limits of Atoma to be on the Atoma Water Works Board, so that can't be changed, because we talked about looking at possibly changing that as well, but the attorney said that that's set in statute just like the civil service stuff, so you have to be within the city limits if you're on the utility board, so that can't be changed.
If you can't, I mean, I wonder, we could just, I think this is probably an easy disaffirmative if we jump to...
I'm sorry.
If we jump to the Human Rights Commission, I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't keep it with, if they're doing something with three, three, and three, and they got some things going, I don't know why we, there's gonna be one-offs, I don't unders, that could be a one-off, that could be, I mean, if we wanna discuss terms, but if they got a lot of good things going, and there's some dedicated members there, I don't see why we couldn't probably just keep that the way it is.
Also, with that one, that commission was developed and written to, the other purpose of the nine, or a larger board too, was to ensure that like multiple groups were represented, that it truly showed our community.
Diversity.
Yeah, the diversity of our community, so.
Right, and when you look at the terms, there's some that are two terms, but everybody looks relatively new.
Well, it all started at once, yeah, so they were staggered.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, they just started recently, and I think we had one, the ones that run for one year were just all renewed, so they actually begin their second term, but they had a one year first.
I think, I would like to see the ones that have more than five, I don't think there's any reason to tell someone that's volunteering their time that, okay, now two of you gotta go, or three, you have to go.
Well, wouldn't it be, I guess for, it would kind of phase out, so if there's a vacancy, we wouldn't...
Doesn't mean that through attrition.
Yes, yeah, so, so nobody that's currently serving, let's say there's a board of seven, we're not gonna say, hey, well, now it's five, two of you gotta go, we wouldn't do that. So, when their term came up, if, let's say, three people came up for renewal, only one would be able to be reappointed to get to five, or to maintain at five.
Okay, I like that better than just getting people that are volunteering their time to tell them.
Right, and we wanna attract other people.
And we need people, we need more volunteers.
Some of the boards that had seven to nine members, we've had a hard time filling all those slots, to be honest about it, and that's another reason for maybe consolidating and reducing some of the numbers on some of these committees. Some of them have had longstanding vacancies, and we're trying harder to recruit new people, but I think you can be pretty effective with most of those boards if you have at least five people.
I'd just like to ask the question of the council. Is anybody here not satisfied with what we had, really and truly?
Keith, I can answer that too, so this was actually addressed by, I think, our past councilperson, Mark Rowe, was the first who brought it up, regarding term limits. There are people who have been on some of these councils for a long period of time. There's also been a lot, and there's also been a lot of vacant spots for a long period of time, and so I think that's where a lot of the conversation began around, around, there were some people who, I think there was some pushback between members on boards, I think we can say, and then there was also some vacant spots that weren't getting filled, and then also people who had been on for like fifteen, twenty, twenty years, or something like that, too.
I think that was the biggest point of contention, wasn't it, was the term limits, like the same people being on, which, I want to choose my words carefully, which may have prevented others from volunteering to fill some of those spots.
And I think that may have been one of the impetuses, so prior to, this probably is back last fall, former councilmember Mark Rowe had raised a question about that with term limits and things.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Galloway had shared some questions about that and the mayor, and so that's why it was brought to a work session, to see if council had concerns or questions, because I don't have a preference in this, but it's policy, it's law that you all decide, so that's why it was brought forward, and then from that work session, why it moved to see what it would look like, so rather than saying, yep, we like this, or we don't like that, or we should be this, we can see what that impact would be by a little time from boards and commissions that may have a concern about reducing numbers or how they operate.
Well, I guess my feeling is, if someone is serving on those boards and they're doing a good job, and even in fact, they may have a few vacancies, why would you not let them continue? That's my feeling. People who volunteer to do, for no pay, to work for the city, why would you say, oh, get out of here, you've been here too long? It just doesn't make any sense to me.
One, if the council adopts these changes, it would be from this point forward, so they would have another eight years, they would have two four-year terms before anybody's gonna be asked to go off, unless through attrition they go off. So, I mean, we're not gonna start dropping people right away, this would be from this point forward, going forward, so that would give most people, if they wanted to stay on those boards, another two four-year terms to serve, so nobody'd be going off right away unless, like I said, through attrition.
Right, and I see, I see what council has come from, I agree with most of what you're saying, I just, also, I think it would, again, I wanna say this carefully, it would maybe help us with some who are unproductive, or, because Keith, I mean, he's right, like, we wanna keep the good ones, I mean, we really do have a good group, good groups of people, however, you know, you wanna keep it fresh and new ideas, and maybe, I think one of the questions was, are people not coming, one that was brought up, and that council may incorrect, about some, you know, on the board that had been there a really long time, and people are afraid to challenge or join the group, or, you know, so I think that was part of what we were gonna discuss, too.
I think if we, if we had trouble in any one of these groups, the good old boy club, so to speak, I can see where we would entertain more. I'm on the cemetery board and just joined the airport one and been, been to one meeting. I haven't seen anything like that, you know what I mean? And with, like, the cemetery board, John, I never can say his last name, you, you don't, twenty-one years or whatever, that guy is dedicated to what he does, and he shares it. I would hate to see eight years down the road, if he still wants to be on it, he has to leave because someone else wants to come on, but I see the other side of it, too, there probably should be some kind of rotation, but if it's, I guess I'm old-fashioned, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, you know?
Well, I guess I would like for someone to point out which of these that we've selected really needs some attention, and just bypass them if they don't.
Or if there's some that, that may be on boards that I'm not on, and they say, well, so-and-so hasn't been here in six months, then I could consider saying, hey, we wanna get someone in fresh blood, or something like that, but, so.
So, could we just look at something like criteria for the boards, like, you have to attend so many meetings, you have to, or, or something like that, is that what you're talking about, looking into something like, just to set criteria?
Well, I mean, if it's someone missing, like, on the cemetery board, I can't think of the lady's name right now, she goes south for the winter, so you can't punish someone like that, but I mean, if someone just ain't taking as much pride as they did when they first got on it, and they're missing meetings, I can see considering changing some of this, but.
They're serving but not serving, that's what you're saying.
Right, and that makes it, without criteria in place, so that makes it hard for the groups to approach us, 'cause if they're approaching us about another group member, well, then that's public, and that could be, you know what I mean, that's a difficult position to be in.
So, the different committees that you guys are on, do you see anything wrong with the committees that you guys are on?
The historical preservation committee is a hot mess.
Yep.
And it needs, yeah. I also think it's important to have consistency across the board as much as possible. Also, because, you know, if you do have someone who's been volunteering for years, and their term comes up on one board or commission, there's nothing that's stopping them from going to another one, and giving their expertise in beginning to do some of those cross-team things, where you can work together more. If they enjoy working for the community, there will be plenty of other opportunities for them to do that, but I do think it's important that we keep providing new positions so that younger and more diverse people in our community can start volunteering for some of these positions.
And I would also say that if we don't, if we always just say, well, it's not broke, let's, or if, what, I don't know what I'm saying, what, say it again. If it's not broken, then if we don't have conversations about it, how do we not know that it's not broken?
Right, that's why I...
No, that's what I'm saying, I'm agreeing with you, we're just making assumptions, too, and so I think that's important to identify and address.
Right, and that's what you meant, was having, yeah.
Yeah.
And Travis and I are trying to do a better job of trying to put some publicity out when we do have vacancies on the various boards and commissions, 'cause I don't always think the city historically is maybe does good a job of letting the public know what is available, and we're trying harder to...
I agree with that, for sure, yeah.
And I've even had some people, 'cause I try and go to the vast majority of the board and commission meetings every month, just like kind of staying on top of what's going on, I really try to go to most of those every single month, and I've had some people that have been on there for twenty years, and they say, you know, I'm getting tired, I'd like to get off of this, but basically they can't get anybody else to serve, so I guess I must stay on here for a while longer, I mean, there are people on there that are tired.
And that's why we're discussing, I'm just saying, the two boards I'm going today. And I suppose I wouldn't be against it if it don't start for like eight more years down the road, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, they can serve two four-year terms, but as people, but as people go off, if they don't wanna stay on, then that'll be used to drop those numbers down to the five.
Yeah, that part, I, I get that, that way no one's getting channeled or whatever.
The way it is right now, it's really loosey-goosey, some of these boards say you can have two members, some say three, some say five, some say seven, some say nine, there's no term limits, it's just kind of a mess, there's not any standardization or consistency to it at all.
So, our discussion is about streamlining.
And standardizing things where it makes sense.
And for a positive, I think something that's really gonna help, just to throw this out there, is when you assigned this, I think consistency is gonna hundred percent improve with us going, 'cause now we can bring it back.
Well, I didn't assign you, you guys kind of got to pick which ones you thought you wanted to serve on.
So, that's a big plus there, that now, you know, we go to our meetings, and they always, that will, they will always have access to us, which is a big deal, that's a big, that's a big thing.
Well, have you also looked at like terms, one is three, one is six, one is seven?
It's really hard, it's really hard to track it, frankly, and the more standardization, it's a little easier to track.
I totally hundred percent agree, it all should be the same number.
And this is consecutive terms, so they could come back, right?
Yeah, it could be like a...
And then they can come back and...
Off a year and come back for other years.
And do another eight years.
Or they could go, like, somebody said they could go on a different committee and try something different.
Right, so why couldn't we do two four-year terms, and then, we talked about that before, board balancing, so why couldn't we do two four-year, two four-year consecutive terms?
That's what's...
Well, that's what the recommendation is, and it says they could do a third, three, three, a third four-year term if nobody is available, or they can't find anybody to replace them.
But if we know that terms are ending, we can put something out there, 'cause I know when like the Human Rights Commission came up, we had a ton of people apply, and so, I mean, if we put something out there now, I imagine we get some more, 'cause we do have a vacancy.
Right, I think if we pushed it more, we would have people probably come out that never came out before, and you know, Travis does a great job of getting this stuff out, so.
Can I put you two on the spot, and let, like, your thoughts on, like, your board, and, or no?
We just had, we recently just had somebody get off the board, and on it for close to thirty years.
Oh, wow.
So, I mean, I see both sides of it, yeah, you have experience, he was there when it was an old terminal to the new terminal, all that changes, but also when you bring somebody new in, they have new ideas, that, you know, you get the same group all the time, you don't get a lot of different ideas. Recently talking to Ethan that runs the Newton Airport, he said he actually went from having, which, he said he still likes to have a pilot or two on his board, but he wanna get more people in the community involved than just pilots, he said, because when it's just pilots, nothing against the group that we have, but it's almost like a park at times.
Yeah.
And he says it's actually...
They're all on the fly by the seat of their pants.
Well, I mean, it's almost like a park, you know, and they show up for, to hang out.
Yeah.
He said when he opened that up to other avenues, he said he got people from the community, and it's the first step for economic development, you know, and therefore, when they land there, that's the first thing that happens, so he said that's why he really pushes for that, you know, to open it up, to get some new faces in there instead of the same consistent people that's been there for years.
I guess I'd like to see us consider a minimum number of people on account on his service, but not necessarily maximum, so if you get nine people that wanna serve, and there's an opening, and if you're saying there could be nine people, let them serve, new ideas are good. On the other hand, but if you only got two people, and you say we can make it four or six, what happened to the rest of those people? Why aren't they serving? Why don't we get more people serving where we can make space for them?
The only caveat to that is, you need to have a number set, so you know what the quorum is.
Yeah.
And that's, I think, with some of the larger boards, if we have vacancies, and then somebody has to miss for an doctor's appointment, or occasion or something, now quorum may be an issue, and so, so at least they have to set the number for the...
Minimum number, right.
No, you have to have a max number to...
We need to know what the number of, for the membership, what that is. It's a minimum and a maximum.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, and if, if there is one board where more people are wanting to apply, maybe we suggest if they apply through another board that we have a hard time...
And we've done that, and we've done that, I've done that with a couple people who applied for a board that we didn't have any current vacancies on, I said, hey, we have vacancies on these, would you be interested in considering those, and one of them said, yeah, they would, so we tried on for that.
I don't think we should be afraid to have one-offs either, like the, the, the Civil Human Rights, Human Rights Commission, I mean, I think that's an okay one-off to have mine.
Well, I would also like to see that, and Peter, maybe you have some, a different view, but I would also like to see that have, like, open that up to maybe a couple county people outside the county, too, so there's a Human Rights Commission for truly one-off, yeah.
Right.
But maybe, I don't know, maybe that's not the best for the commission, so.
Well, that one is a state.
You might wanna change the name, like, 'cause it's the Atoma Civil Rights, Human Rights Commission.
I don't know, I guess when I, when I was working on that with some other people, we were hoping that it would ultimately be a...
A county commission?
A bigger commission, where we had county involved, too, but again, I don't know, just in the future, maybe.
Some may want to petition the county for that, yeah.
So, do you want me to comment?
Yes, I do, I'm not here to say...
I like the fact that we've got nine members, it brings, it does bring a great deal of diversity, not just ethnic diversity, but also a tremendous diversity in life experience, and all the people who've been on, who've been appointed have been very, very invested in making this work, you know, it's, we've spent quite a bit of time learning about what we're supposed to be doing, and just getting just some practical applications, it won't be bringing a report to you in the summer with kind of where we're at. So, I do think that having nine members on that particular board makes sense, for other boards where they're more technical in nature, I can understand how having a fixed, smaller number makes sense. I don't have any opposition personally to the idea of the term limits you're talking about, the thing you always have to balance is institutional knowledge versus new ideas, and on balance, I think probably having fresh ideas is a good thing, because it can, even with, with everyone's best intentions, it can become dominated by the people who are there who have a set, if not an agenda, at least very set ideas about what the function and what the opportunities are, that will limit the growth of, of the function of the board, so I think fresh ideas are, are good.
You also have to remember that all these boards and commissions are not equal, 'cause like the airport isn't, that's an advisory board, we have, the waterworks board and the library board have a lot of power, they get to make a lot of decisions, they approve their own budgets, they do a lot of stuff that the other boards and commissions don't do, the civil service commission has a lot of power, and they get to make a lot of decisions, that's all set in statute, so there's even differences, I guess what I'm saying, on the parameters of what these boards and commissions can all do, 'cause they're not all created equal, so you gotta kind of keep that in mind, too.
I have two questions, one on the, so the waterboard, waterworks board, so there's a gentleman, my understanding, moved to the country.
Back in 2017, and I held off on that to myself.
So, in a sense, it's a law that...
The attorney that's passed the, come on the court, does he understand that? I haven't talked to, I haven't, I talked to Tim, Tim and I have talked a little bit about it, and I haven't talked to him yet, 'cause I didn't know how this was all gonna shake out, till we got the stuff back from Christine.
Okay.
So, it's in the statute that you have to be in the city limits if you're gonna serve on a utility board, so Chuck's gonna have to go off at some point, but I'm not gonna tell her that.
Well, he started his term in the city.
Right.
And then lifted the line, and be thinking that he should finish his term, and understand he can't re-up because he's now outside the city.
But it's a law, a statute that says that he cannot...
Laws are meant to be broken, don't worry about it.
That'd be like my councilperson...
I don't think that's how that works.
That'd be like if councilperson or mayor was elected to serve the city, and then leave outside the city limits, they would no longer be eligible.
I've already had two former city councilpeople say it's illegal, he shouldn't have been there.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I, I thought it was that they would be, you know, able to continue to serve once they moved outside of the area that we're supposed to represent.
I'm sure Chuck knew, didn't he?
I don't know.
Before he moved to the country?
I don't know.
Did you guys talk about that at a waterboard, man?
No, and the, and the reality of it is, is Chuck is a great guy, he's a great board member, he cares about the community, however, a law is a law, legal is legal, and I just feel like, you know, we, we don't wanna lose trust in the people, like I said, it's unfortunate that we would have to lose him, however, a law is, is a law, and I, and I think he would understand that.
Well, the first step would be to have the conversation with him.
Right.
And if he's not able to finish his term, to ask him to resign, and if he chooses not to, then you'd have to take appropriate action at that time.
I think it's, it's later this year.
No, it's 2026, Chuck Mason?
Yeah.
2026.
I thought it says here. I thought it's...
No, so I mean, yeah, we'll have to have that conversation.
So, my, my second question is the historical preservation commission that's having problems, and we probably should address that, because we're ultimately in...
Well, it's kind of, it's kind of up to a point taking care of itself, 'cause one person left, it was, it was a matter of personality clashes for those.
That's what I figured, but...
I mean, I think there's still some other, I think there still might be some other issues, but I think they're gonna get it resolved now that this one person has chosen to, to resign. You know, we don't really have, as far as I'm concerned, 'cause people always look to the mayor, something's going wrong on these boards and commissions, we really don't have any good concrete criteria to use to justify telling somebody they gotta get off, there's really not a lot of clarification of what can I say to somebody, I mean, people don't like you, they don't want you on their board anymore.
Right.
We really don't have any set criteria that how you evaluate that to get somebody out, 'cause we've had some people on some of these boards and commissions that frankly weren't value-added, and they needed to be taken off, but nobody really felt they had enough concrete evidence to justify doing, so they just left him on there, I mean, this was going on before I came.
Why can't the, the board presidents or, or the chairs of the board, can the boards set their own criteria and kind of police theirself, and then if they need assistance from us, like, you gotta counsel on our board, so, you know, this is gonna sound weird, I don't think that we should be in every board and getting in what they do, that just shows distrust, however, if they would set their own criteria, and then they needed something to reach out to them.
And just for clarification purposes, you wanna make sure you're careful how you say that, none of the council people are members of those boards and commissions.
Right, they are not, they're just...
You're a liaison to the board and commission, you can't be on the board and commission if you're a councilperson, so you just need to make sure people understand you're not a member of that board and commission, you're the council's representative on that.
And when I say that, all I mean by that, is I, I mean by that, the reason I like that so much is 'cause that makes a city person accessible to them at all times, they have, you know, somebody they could call, and, and of course, they can approach any one of us at any time, you guys see what I'm saying, I think it's just nice to have, you know, that they know they, they, you know...
I was glad that the city council all agreed to serve on all of them, even if somebody had to take two or three, 'cause the last two or three years when I asked that, we would get some that didn't wanna do it, so we didn't have council representatives on all the boards and commissions like we do today, so I think that's great, and says a lot about the current council, but you gotta remember, too, there's always a department head, on every one of these boards or commissions, there's always a department head, so there's always a city staff person that's directly involved in these boards and commissions, it's not like there's no city staff involved in providing technical expertise to these boards and commissions, they all have a department head or somebody that serves on that, the council representative is a nice addition.
Historic Preservation Commission, there's only three people, so what's their quorum?
There's four, simple one there.
There's four, there's supposed to be five.
And one vacant spot.
One just resigned recently.
Okay, so it doesn't show a vacancy, I see.
There's just a big gap right here, yeah, there's a vacancy, 'cause I thought the same thing.
That's a vacancy, okay.
I thought the same thing.
There was four.
Well, the term went up, so they must have taken up extra space.
So, their quorum has to be two?
And I've got one person this week that wants to be considered on the historic preservation, I think we're gonna get another person, too, so I think we're gonna be able to get that filled pretty quick.
You do a good job there, thank you for working on those.
I always, not that they get to decide, but I always try and check with the department head that's assigned to that border commission, saying, hey, I've got this application, do you, 'cause sometimes I don't always know these people, I don't know everybody in Atoma, although I know a lot of people, but I don't know everybody, so I try and ask the department head, do you know who this person is, do you have any thoughts or ideas about whether you think they'd be a good member, they don't have to say yes or no, but I always try and run the names by all the department heads, just to have professional courtesy, 'cause sometimes they know these people, they might say, uh, I don't think that person would be a good addition, or, yeah, they'd really be a great person to put on that board, so I do try and at least run the names by the board, the department head, and once I appoint Once I appoint them, then you guys have to still approve them too before it's official.
I think they appreciate that though. No, I appreciate that that way, you know, they.
Cause I don't want people that.
You're putting the right people on the right board, you know? Just because somebody may not be right for one, they may be right for another. So I do appreciate that you do that.
And my earlier comment was just, we shouldn't be making change just for the sake of change. That's just not the way it's done.
Or it should be done.
Yeah.
So Phil, do you wanna keep going through it or what do you want to do?
Yeah, so I will start at the top, the public safety advisory committee. That is one where they hadn't met for about two years. And then we tried to restart that group and we're meeting on a quarterly basis instead of monthly. But the purpose isn't necessarily there that was once there before. Used to have neighborhood watch groups that would come and they'd gather information from residents. They'd bring them to these meetings. There was questions about stop signs should go with this place or that place. A lot of that stuff is all done at the staff level now. And if there's any questions from staff about things, it'll go to the council. So I don't know that the purpose for that group exists.
And that's what I listed on the book anyway, right?
Is it Atumla Public Safety in some of the top of each?
That's one where I'd almost recommend disbanding it. It's one where we've had vacancies.
Then we, we just brought it back like a year ago.
Yeah, well, yeah, and, and we tried, we had a couple of the original members or the members that were on before. One of them has since not renewed. We were able to add two members, I think, but we're still at.
Four.
Four now? Yeah. Out of six. And so if that goes to five, we're, you know, still one vacancy and we haven't had that full ever. Well, since in the last couple of years.
The one I told if I wanted sidewalks, I had to talk, I think I was told I have to talk to the public safety advisory. So if you get rid of them, does that mean they can get sidewalks in certain areas?
Yeah, Phil. I don't think that was in their purview. Yeah, only council can order sidewalks.
Okay, so I must have been taken that way. So I got away from the sidewalk conversation.
I can see both sides. However, I probably wouldn't just ban a group that we just brought back otherwise.
Their recommendation last fall was they wanted to stay on for two quarters in this calendar year. So in June, they're gonna have to make a decision whether they feel they wanna continue it or not. They all agreed to do two quarters in the year.
Wait till June then.
And then decide their future. That's like Phil said, I think the purpose of the original board or commission has outlived itself. And a lot of that's absorbed by city staff. Plus I think Travis is doing a really good job of putting out all these press releases from the fire, the, the police, the city, public works. We're really trying to keep people knowledgeable about road closings and detours and all that stuff. So there doesn't seem to be, you know, they haven't had any agenda items that they felt they needed to agree on in the few meetings that we've had with them. So it's like Phil said, I think the purpose of that committee might have been important ten, fifteen years ago. I'm not so sure they're gonna feel like they wanna keep meeting and kind of like McKee said, you don't wanna change something just to change it. We don't wanna just have a meeting down, a meeting if there's no constructive purpose of it either.
So it sounds like in June, they're gonna have a conversation and they can like make that and then we could, if this, then we could have a recommendation to disband at that point.
If we had vacancies on other committees, we could reach out to them and say, hey, if you still would like to serve, we have this.
Well, if you guys adopt this five member thing for some of these committees that we've got two or three vacancies right now. Those people want them to come off. So nobody is gonna have to come off right away. We'll just delete those vacancies. We're not trying to be heavy handed and do anything adverse to anybody, but at some point you can't kind of start and then go forward.
Yeah, I like the, I hope Kara gets her sidewalk by June.
Then she'll bitch because she's got to shovel it in.
The sidewalks are the property owners' responsibility. The property owners are responsible for keeping their sidewalks clear. What's the committee that'll shovel her sidewalk?
I think that's that sidewalks.
That being you? Okay.
Anyways.
So we, we decided that was your, and then we decided.
Was it airport next to it now still or did you move on to something?
Airport was next. That's in that section ten two. That's this one over here.
You have five members.
Do you have a three year term?
All right, here's that. What do you have for membership now? Five.
We have five.
So that, I think it just clarifies that five members.
But they have a three year term right now.
Okay.
So it would increase it.
Yep, but out of section one, I think you might wanna look at deleting this one part that really is not applicable and they have never followed it because it says the members of the airport advisory board shall receive such compensation as provided by resolution of the city council should be paid for their reasonable expenses in serving in said capacity. There's no other board that does that other than the waterworks board pays their P C. So they've never paid the airport people to serve on that board. So I think if that's the intent, that needs to be taken out of this next change. You just take that out of there.
I agree. I agree. It's under section one, section eight two, subsection D.
It's under workman's. It's a completely separate workman's.
Oh, yeah.
Section D. When I read that, I thought, ooh. Magic cross out. So we'll see.
So do we wanna move them to the four year term? Is that what we're saying?
No, he's saying that we need to delete that term.
That they're gonna get paid to serve on.
No, no, I mean, but you said the current term was three years. So does that need to be moved to a four year term?
Oh, no, I think that's, that's what the language is doing. In section B, it's for terms of four years. We're mostly more in the second terms.
The attorney went through all of the political changes.
She's added that language in. Gotcha, okay.
I just think she, she left that one in there. Maybe she thought they were getting paid, but when I checked the J Ds, they've never paid anybody.
Does that include the costs of like if they go to a conference or something too? Is that paid for by us or do they pay, do they go to conferences?
We've never took one.
Okay.
Well, I think if they took a special class or special trip, we probably should pay for that on an as needed basis.
Would you fly?
Is there anything else with that?
That was the only thing that I saw. That probably ought to be deleted. If they don't wanna pay people, we shouldn't have it in there.
Yeah.
I agree.
That's probably some carryover from a long time ago. Maybe they did do that at one time years ago.
All right, well then with that revision, I'm gonna close this one out. I don't think there's general consensus on that. Not voting, of course, but. Okay, what was the next one? Historic preservation commission? Any thoughts on that?
Are we gonna say that it was kind of fixing itself and we're good with the terms?
Yeah, I mean, we'd just be including that, the, that's the four year terms, two terms, et cetera.
So just like everything else, four years, two terms.
Yeah.
Okay, if it says three years, then you need to change it to four.
Yeah, that's, and that's this code that you would later adopt. Yeah. Yeah, that's, and that's why we're having the work session to make what you're good with. We're gonna incorporate and you'll officially vote for that in the future. Yeah, okay. So that was the conservation, board of health.
That was in its own too, I think.
Yeah, it was.
Is that inspection? Is that what you call the board of health?
No, that's something different.
No. Section twenty-two dash twenty-nine.
There's a board.
I think it's board of health will be up there.
Board of health is not up there, okay. But it's, it's the same.
Yeah. It's board. We're in the board of health people.
Oh, that's right. That's right. So there's no.
Are you helping?
Why should you have them in there then? Okay. All right, cemetery board trustees. That was this one here. That's eleven two. It's, it's a separate one as well.
So they have seven members.
They currently have seven members.
And serve seven years.
So how is that gonna work as far as when their term is up, when their seven years is up?
Yep.
So like the first one, Terry, she, they, they, I don't know if it's, I don't know who Terry is. But their term ends twenty twenty-five, so in a year, about a year, a couple of months, or no, sorry. Connie ends in twenty twenty-four.
Didn't we just put her on though to fill a vacancy? Yes, no?
However, even if it's somebody who's been here for a while, they would have the opportunity to do the four years, the two four year stretch.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
So if Connie goes off, then that term, her, that term would turn into a four year, not a seven.
So skip to the top, Terry, where you were talking.
Right, so what you're, what you're saying is, I wanna make sure I understand you. Connie's time is up.
In a couple of months.
In a couple of months.
Yes.
July or whatever. So she still has capability of having two four, four year terms before she.
What?
Well, right now it's seven members and all seven are in there. Right, so if you're going down to five, if this is approved before her time ends, she would be not reappointed unless someone else gave up a seat or else until like after the little five year.
Well, actually, she's in a funny position. She's just kind of caught in that little like we were gonna do it through attrition. Cause she was appointed. She's just caught in that small timeframe.
No, I missed Vogue. I missed Vogue, sorry. I thought she was just appointed to fill a vacancy, but I'm thinking of a different person.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
But that's really, that'd be the only fair way to do it. I mean, that's the way.
She'll be done in July.
Yeah. Unless she wants to serve on something else.
Well, and, and this would be similar to like human rights commission. If it's working and seven members and there's not issue of vacancies and you're fine with that, you could keep it at seven, seven people. And then still incorporate the terms and term limits and everything else.
But here, I know mankind and I, and I'll see their point of view. You have other people that have what the, the human rights, they're, they're wanting nine. So anyone that has above five, they're gonna say, well, then how come we don't have it? Cause we have a board that we're just busy and we got stuff that we do. You see what I mean? If we're trying to keep it more flat, then we need to make it more flat.
Yeah, but human rights commission asked about it.
What's that?
But human rights commission asked us to.
Right, but does any of the other boards know that we're doing this?
That's a good point.
Well, I think you gotta take into consideration the subject of boards too. Like you said, is it technical or is it, you know, like morals, ethics, human rights, that's a difference. Especially when they're broke up into three, three and three.
Yeah.
But you guys.
But I guess, did you all tell your boards that this was happening, that we're having the conversation?
I didn't.
So I mean, I think that, I mean, I've been talking about it. I sat at a meeting on Saturday and said, hey, we're talking about boards and commissions. Come and see, you know, like I think there was something on Facebook too where, was it? No, maybe not.
Well, you sat on that board for a while. So you're concerned about the people on it. I get it.
I'm concerned about people that's already on it. Well, especially her. She's due to be on in July.
Exactly.
She may be grateful. She may be grateful.
Right, but I don't know that. You don't, I mean, talk to her. You can, you can say, hey.
Well, so this, this doesn't have to be all decided tonight. I mean, if you wanna go back and have that conversation, we can either leave it at seven and have the conversation or we can move it to five. And then when we bring it before, you can make that amendment at the dais to leave it at seven if you want. So you can still have that conversation before it actually comes to a vote.
Is this something we could put on their agenda? And then just like schedule this out for council meetings like a month and a half from now? That way we know they've all seen it. It's been on their agenda. They know we're gonna talk about it. And they can review the changes and give us their opinion.
Yeah, I, I think it was brought up. There is nothing that says we have to make any of these changes. We can leave everything exactly as it is and nothing changes. So, yeah, I mean, it's completely at your discretion on what you wanna do and how wanna do in timeline.
What do you guys think of this? If we keep the, however many, however many members each group has, keep the number, but get it down to four years, term wise. Instead of, cause like one here is three years. And that would keep it, and then one six years, one seven years, one four years. I'm just asking a question. I'm not gonna lose any sleep or lose any their weight, but.
The only people that would come off this year, if you made this approval, would be people in twenty twenty-four. There's not that many people on here that's going off in twenty twenty-four. So there's gonna be most of these people. Still gonna have another year yet and some are gonna have two or three more years for their, before their new two four year terms kick in.
She would actually have four more, or eight more years.
No, because we would be going down through attrition to five.
Not if you go down to five.
It's like I said, she's just trapped in a little.
If their term comes up in twenty twenty-four and you go to five, then you would start taking those people off. Otherwise you're never gonna get to that five.
I get you.
Oh, and it'll take a couple of years to get to that point.
But anybody that would be appointed from that point forward would have the full eight years, assuming there was a vacancy on there.
I think, I think there is several people that'll wanna get off the boards.
So why don't we just, again, we don't have to make any decisions today. So we can go back to our boards, ask the department heads to put it on and see if it's going to be a hindrance to go down to five. We've identified that the human rights commission has, they're a very good reason for that, you know? And so then maybe talking to like the cemetery, maybe they have groups too, you know what I mean? Like maybe they have their small like committees and everything like that. So I don't think it hurts to take a moment. Nothing has to be decided, but I think conversation is healthy. And then we can, we learned a lot today. We could take that back and then have those conversations with our boards and commissions.
Like the Atumla Housing has three, five members, but three of them, three of them are done this year.
They have their own sort of rules, regulations, so we're not even talking about them as part of the rest of this group.
Oh.
Not that particular one.
They're kind of like the waterworks board and the library. They have their own statutory, like their own regulations. So they make, they make all their own decisions about budgets and everything. They operate very much like the library and the waterworks board.
Okay.
I still appoint people to their board though and they come in, which is kind of odd.
Before we come to a decision at council, if we decide to bring this decision, those should be marked so that all council members say, and this is an exception, so they stand out. We don't redo that or whatever. Because I don't know these boards that are exceptions to making their own rules and.
Well, I think Cyan, I think Cyan had a good ideas to just ask every department head this next month to put this whole board and commission thing on their agenda and just talk to that commissioner, that board and see what their thoughts are. And then bring that information back to the council before you officially vote on any changes. I think that's a good job. I think that's a great idea. Cause I don't think a lot of them know that the council's been even looking at maybe making some changes on boards and commissions. I haven't been telling everybody that.
It has been posted on two different agendas.
It has.
May attention.
Yeah.
And we could all be on the same page about it. So, because since we all go to their meetings, at least, you know, we need to be able to answer their questions.
I think that's a great idea to just ask all the department heads to put it on their agenda this next month.
Kevin, as to that point too, it is also, the ones that we can't change was, is also identified in the packet tonight too.
It's in the email from legal.
Yeah.
How are they identified?
Um, in the emails.
Email?
Yeah.
I love email.
I think there's a couple of emails.
Yeah, civil service, historic preservation. But that was only for city limits.
She forgot her damn waterworks board, didn't she?
So are we going to allow these committees to expand them if they want to? The question was asked, there's one committee that's already wants to be nine. So if there's.
Well, they don't wanna expand. They just wanna stand where they currently have.
I understand. Okay, I wonder.
No, I don't wanna argue, but I'm just saying, I mean, it's like Phil said, you guys can decide to do anything you want. I was also in agreement with Mark Rowe that this needs to have some standardization to it. It's just too hard to track. And I know there's a lot of people that have been on these boards for several years and would love to get off of them. But they felt guilty to, because people say, oh, if you get off, we'll have nobody to replace you. We have a big problem getting some people to serve on some of these boards and commissions. We're trying to do a better job of educating the public, but I don't think you're gonna get there as much pushback as you think you might if some of these people start going off later this year. I just don't think that's gonna be the case. But I think it's a good idea to run it by and have it on the agenda for each board and commission meeting during April. Then you guys can officially take action maybe in, in May.
It'll be nice to hear their concerns as well, or their needs.
Cause I don't think a lot of them know that you guys are even looking at some of these changes. Doesn't hurt to run it by them.
And they may have ideas that we haven't even thought of or, or, or concerns we haven't thought of.
And I think the attorney wrote in there that if a, a spot is open and no one applying for it, that person should stay back on.
For like a third term.
For a third term.
Yeah, I think in the different areas, it has that, that exact one.
This is gonna sound funny though, even, even in that situation, you want people to be excited about being on a board, not obligated. Does that make sense? This is gonna sound funny though, even even in that situation, you want people to be excited about being on a board, not obligated. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and you know, frankly, all the boards and commissions are on the city's website, but a lot of people don't look at that. You know, they don't even know what some of these boards and commissions even do. So how can you expect people to jump up and say, oh, I'd like to be on on this committee, or I'd like to be on that, when they don't even really understand what it is that they do? So you have to do some education.
I just wanna do one minute videos or two minute videos like you did with the snow remover. Do these different committees. Hey, this is this committee, this is what they do, you know.
So I have the Atumla Housing, Water Works, and what's the third committee?
Library.
Library, that we can't.
The library, the Water Works. Civil Service.
And there's another one too.
But those two are only about city.
The Board of Adjustment, you can't do anything with Board of Adjustment either.
Civil Service is three, that's that, that's it.
Yeah, get it in.
So is this a state thing?
Yes.
Then we come to my. With the four. That way when I go to tell them about it, I wanna make sure I have my.
You know, and here again, I think it's the the department head and the board chair that needs to deal with this, but you know, JR brought something up too and I I I I mean, I'm sorry.
Oh, wow.
Cause I I I I see it all the time too. We have some of these boards and commissions where some people never even come to the meetings. They they, some of them have really good attendance and some of them don't have.
Yeah, and that's why I asked that earlier, that.
And if you don't come, then you can't do anything if you don't have a quorum. And sometimes they've had to cancel meetings if they don't have a quorum. So some of these boards and commissions have very faithful people that show up at every monthly meeting and some of them, we struggle sometimes to get enough people to the table. Like I said, some of these people are just tired of being on some of this stuff.
The people that don't have the biggest impact. Only as a positive.
So there's a plan of action then to move this forward?
Communicate that to the department heads.
Yeah.
That they need to put this on all the board and commission.
Well, the ones that we.
Right, right. From April and then bring information back and then the council could maybe take formal action on it some in May, one of the board meetings in May.
May I ask a question? This has to do with performance. It's real hard if if they're, I think you're right, there should be some criteria um for, some performance criteria for for members in order for them, that they could be removed for cause. So an easy one would be attendance. And I don't know what appropriate is, but say if somebody had more than fifty percent of unexcused absences or some number, some generous number, whatever you think is appropriate, and they missed that, that they could be, they could be dispensed by the city, by the city council, you know, for for non-performance. Um I don't know how you get, you you can get disruptive people, you could get, you know, obnoxious people. Those are, those become subjective and it's hard to deal with that unless politically, you know, you take, take the person aside, say, you know, like, you're a hot mess. We think you ought to resign to save their business troubles, but the.
Attendance is something you.
But attendance is a hard number and and that would actually be be useful. Because as you say, not being able to have a quorum and do business is very frustrating. Um and and you need people there who could contribute.
I'd say for suggestion, if you did have people who weren't performing or were or or who words negative, I think the board does need some autonomy to come to the council and say, listen, this is our concern. Um and then that's something we can hear, cause I mean, we all want it to be positive, we all want to be excited there, but he's right. There are people that may have ulterior motives for being on or or just can't cooperate.
The way it reads right now, the mayor can appoint, the mayor can take people off, but there's not a lot of criteria on how you go back to them. And if they wanted to appeal a decision I made, then they could always come and appeal to the council. But there needs to be some.
Something needs to be.
Criteria.
Good, good question.
It seems to me like the chairman of that board should have the authority to talk with that person, not discharge him.
They should.
Just tell him, you know, we're considering needing more people that do show up and you have a record of them that you don't always show up. Mess up with them a lot.
And I told, I told some department heads that, especially if they had problems. I said, you need to take some responsibility for having some dialogue with these people. You know, cause they're helping you.
So on on that same note, first of all, sometimes it is that chairperson who is creating issues. And then in that case, you know, you have to have something to fall back on for other people to come to that person who's supposed to be the leader.
And just remove the chairperson.
Well, it should be set up as.
But but you also should have some kind of criteria to say, this is, I will have problems with this person. And also if chair, if chairpersons are going to other members of their committee and having problems, giving them these standards also gives them a discussion point to bring up as a leader, instead of just having it all opinion based all the time.
So maybe there's an opportunity to go back to the committees, uh talk about some of those things, maybe establish some criteria that could be put into a uniform uh subject for all these committees, commissions and and come back with that, rather than trying to hash it all out.
I think it'd be good for you to challenge the department heads and to have them come up with a list of criteria what they think ought to be followed in order to get somebody off one of their boards or commissions and let them have some input into that. Let them come up with some ideas and suggestions.
Cause they would know more.
Well, they're kind of responsible for making sure that board and commission functions.
Like you know, I said before, with 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 the change of each one of us being being on on a board or a committee, like I said, we can't vote, we can't like that, but we can sure help identify problems or quicker that maybe could be resolved before it gets up here. You know, the best place to solve it is here. If somebody's having a performance problem or attendance problem, maybe that all, that's all it takes is a talk, is hey, man, you really gotta come. You know, maybe, maybe that is, or 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 interaction, like maybe they have something wrong at home and we don't know, you can't, you know, I mean, just somebody who could could find out and help with that situation.
So I think that by um like what Cyan said too, and everyone's gonna say this, by um having some criteria, we also empower the people on the um commissions and boards to be able to have those conversations. But then we also empower our um department heads to um have the conversations if the people on the board do not feel comfortable. And so then I think that's one of our things that we're trying to do is empower the people in Atumla. And so if we allow them to have some input and allow our department heads, then um we're just there truly for, to be there to listen, to understand and learn, you know, and then be there if we need to, but ultimately it falls on um we truly are allowing our commissions and boards to be empowered and our department heads to be in the position that they're in, the department head.
And that's how they will be more productive and more performant.
And it makes it easier for me as mayor to support the department heads' decision if I know they've had that discussion already with that board member group, it's not, they look at their job.
So I think Phil said, I think we do have some direction that we can go, you can talk with, you know, send some information to the department heads and perfect. And then you, that's, yes, I appreciate it, Peter.
Do we need a motion or is this like?
No, no.
Say, we're gonna get, we're gonna get the information and come back to this.
No action at this meeting.
Yes.
In A.
Um I would also just say last thing on this is that um depending on how those conversations go, I don't know, we need to have another work session to talk about them before we, like I mean, vote them. So that is.
I think you're in that, and that we probably will need to.
Yeah.
Actually, what the mayor said, I actually think conversations like you said are gonna go way better than we're assuming. We're not assuming the worst by any means.
But depending on what feedback the departments and heads have to bring back to you guys, you might wanna hear that before you take any of the.
Reaction.
I just think those conversations are gonna be productive.
Sounds like you have a good point for that.
Okay, if we're done with that, the next item is to talk about local option sales tax, ballot language and other fund revenue option discussion. So I'm gonna turn it, turn it over to Phil and Cole to have that discussion. Yes, Cole's gonna come and lead us on.
Oh, this truly is the hot seat.
No pun intended.
Pun intended.
No fun.
Okay, so the uh local option sales tax is set to expire at seven thirty-one twenty-five. To extend the tax, we need to have a referendum. Uh staff is coming to you early in order to have ample time uh to ensure passage of the measure and is recommending that a special election be set for September twenty twenty-four. Uh ballot language must be submitted to the county auditor no less than ninety days prior to the uh election date. This is conforming with the new um Iowa code. Uh council will need to pass a resolution setting the ballot language in in April to adequately meet the deadline. Um the language does uh does not change the amount of sales taxes, it's capped at one percent. So there's, we're we're not charging anybody more, it's it's still the same, it just continues it. Uh the tax is split ninety-ten between streets and sewers and property tax relief. And then I gave you the original language. Uh and so um at where you see the posed use of the tax, the ten percent and the ninety percent. The effects of House File seven eighteen has left the general fund in a position where we are spending more than our revenues. Interim Finance Director Kinzer estimated that the annual loss in today's dollars is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A change of the allocation to the general fund could help cover the, cover this loss. Staff estimates that that based upon current projected revenues of four point five million that allocated an additional five percent of the general fund generates two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And uh ten percent generates an additional four hundred and fifty thou, four hundred and fifty thousand in additional funds.
So from ten to twenty would be, is that right? Am I understanding that?
Yeah.
Advising the split.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Um the council also must consider if the local option sales tax should continue to have a sunset clause or be instituted permanently. And when I say it's instituted permanently, you can at a later date um propose a referendum changing the allocation. Uh and then you can also then reset us, re-put it to a sunset date. Uh I know that uh that a lot of communities that that have over the years, that had sunset clauses, gotten rid of them, just went permanent because everybody that has the tax is not getting rid of it. Uh but it just makes that extra step, be able to change that allocation. Uh rather than once every ten or fifteen years, it would be, hey, we need more in streets and roads, we need somewhere, somewhere else, and then you have to call a special referendum. Uh language, uh the the language we use is could be extended from street improvements and or sewer improvements to be uh to be a more defined use. For example, X percentage for the maintenance, repair and improvements of streets, roads, bridges, wastewater collections, stormwater collections and wastewater treatment. Um while the uh original language is is vague enough that we can do what we want, being more precise with that, with that ninety or eighty or eighty-five percent um uh means that that's where it has to go. E- exactly, into those types of things. It wouldn't go for operations, it's just for maintenance, repair or improvement streets. So it's a little more concise.
Is that, is that language set by council or state?
Set by council. Do your purpose in your, in your split is spent, uh is set entirely by council.
Okay.
This is one of the ones where they give you freedom to be able to um spend the money where you like. A lot of communities will put in specific things and at the very bottom they put in uh for any lawful purpose, right? So what happens is if they, if if they got fire truck, and they don't even put percentages, but if they wanna buy a fire truck, they can buy a fire truck with it. If they wanna do, build a library with it, they can build a library with it. So um they do give you the freedom to be able to do things like that.
I think that's a little loosey goosey for me.
And and that's fine. I, you know, I think that the 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 history has been to send certain amount to streets and sewers and a certain amount uh to to property tax relief. Uh making sure I got, there's my second page. Okay.
So are we gonna, just a quick question, are we gonna talk about or break this up and talk about the local option or?
And then we'll talk about.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, and what I'm actually gonna do is is um skip to my budget impact on the, on the second page. Uh so as previously stated, the effect of House File seven eighteen is currently two hundred and fifty thousand in today's dollars. By fiscal year twenty-eight, the consolidated general fund levy must be reduced from its current rate of eight point five one nine two four two per thousand to a flat eight-ten per thousand. Over the last five years, Atumla's taxable evaluations have seen steady growth of two point five percent. However, in tax year twenty-one and twenty-three, incre, the the increases were over eight percent, with tax year twenty-two having a deep uh a reduction of five point six one percent. So it wasn't a steady climb, it was uh up and down. Uh so assuming a valuation growth of one point seven five, which I think may be liberal, um one and a half may be more appropriate, but one point seven five and the um consolidate remaining, uh consolidated general fund remaining at eight point five and so on. Uh that the general fund property, property tax revenues estimated for fiscal year twenty-seven are estimated to be uh six million one hundred and thirty-two thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars. With the reduction uh to the eight-ten property uh consolidated rate, it is estimated that, again, with the projected growth, could be five, five million nine hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars. With all else remaining constant, revenue uh will not return to fiscal year twenty-seven levels until fiscal year thirty. So there's a gap that will be need to, need to be uh made up. Being that this is the first year and that I wasn't involved from the very start uh on the budget, um I don't know if next year, the state in their forums ratchet you down and ratchet you down and ratchet you down until you get to the eight-ten. Or if they'll keep that consistent and then on fiscal year twenty-eight, they say, okay, you're at the eight-ten. If they ratchet us down in steps, that helps us be able to plan. If they don't, with the next few budgets, we're gonna need to look at what we need to do in order to get down to those, those um uh revenues.
Did Jessica say, Jessica commented on this, she didn't know either, right?
Yeah, so there's a formula that that goes into it.
But we didn't know if it was gonna be a ratchet or a.
We didn't know until we received our assessed valuation, our taxable valuations, and so that came in late December, early January thing. And that's when we knew the impact. We knew we couldn't go above whatever the number was, so now we're locked in at this eight fifty-one. It won't be back to the eight sixty-six. Eight fifty-one is our ceiling. And depending on where that percentages are, uh if we're less than two percent growth, we we can stay at the eight fifty-one. But I think to Cole's point, it, we may be, better be proactive and ratchet down a little bit, so we're not going to eight fifty-one, eight-ten in one year.
And I think that's what Jessica has commented on too, that we were.
Yeah.
Now, it it worked, I mean, it was more than what I would have liked, you know, if you're taking five years and saying sixty-seven cents, it's about twelve and thirteen, fourteen cents. Rather than twenty-six, I would have rather done that, but we were at the point where the three percent came off the top and and we got down to the eight fifty-one.
And this year was a a double, double whammy in that they were limiting the tax growth, but then also that the rollback dropped from fifty-four percent to forty-six percent, right? So any appreciable growth that we might have had was taken away by those two mechanisms.
Well, and last year, the city of Atumla lost six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. By the way, they recalculated the rollback on multi-residential facilities.
Exactly.
So that was last year's.
And that was last year's shit. Um I have not been uh up to date on what the legislature's doing this year, but it doesn't sound like there's anything with property tax. I think that um they're gonna take, they're gonna take that issue and let another legislature decide if there's anything else to do. They did indicate last year, it says, well, this was just a start. And well, if this is just a start, we're in trouble.
Yeah.
So. Uh so I did not do estimates on expenditure growth. However, if the growth rate, uh i- if the growth rate is two point nine percent uh based upon the current CPI, expenditures growth will outpace revenue growth. An increase in the loss percentage to the general fund and or an increase in the franchise fees is an option that should be considered. So we'll talk about the local option sales tax first.
Perfect.
And there's a bill that made it through the legislature through funnel week. They're, they're wanting to take over, the states want to take over local option sales taxes next year. So it might not even be up to the council's discretion or the county's discretion on local option sales tax next year. If that passes.
Yeah, we we would still, from from the version that I've heard in the past couple of years, we would still be able to define how we want the split. But according to the 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 last legislation that I looked at, um what they would do is they got rid of all of the, a lot of tax exemptions, so like on computer equipment and other things like that. They got rid of that in order to increase the 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 amount of sales tax coming in. Well, then what they were gonna do is take the, add that increase and fund the constitutional. Well, then what they were gonna do is take that increase and fund the constitutional, whatever the DNR thing that was passed in the constitution, because they need to establish a 5/8 sales tax to fund it. Well, they don't want to raise taxes. So what they're doing is, is getting rid of all that, taking the extra and putting it into this. But the idea is, is that to capture more of it, they say, okay, everybody in the state's gonna have a local option sales tax. And we're gonna give you what you're getting now. But you may not get anymore, is what I've understood.
I wouldn't trust that. They're supposed to come up, but they take it over, they're gonna come up with their own formula. And based on whatever the formula's gonna be, they'll give cities and counties some money that will never be what you could have generated if you still had local control yourself.
Correct. And the argument back to them is, is this is something that the local community has voted upon. And it's, you know, you want the citizens to have control over their taxation, this is one way to do it. So.
But I think every city's in the same situation, aren't they?
Every...
Those that have it.
Those that have it. Now, what it is, is Pope County does not have local option sales tax. No city, county does not. So what it is, is they all of a sudden would get an influx of money.
Cool politics, man.
Yes.
Called taxation without representation. Anyway.
So.
It's very concerning that the current state legislature and our governor's office seems really bent on trying to limit the ability of cities and counties to generate their own revenue. And that's gonna be the demise of a lot of cities and counties if they continue down that path very far. It's very concerning to me.
We need to approach our representatives and senators and let them know what they would be doing to us if they allowed that to take place.
Yep.
Most of us probably know our people well enough that they would respond.
Wait, wait.
They have been receiving emails and conversations, and trying to have conversations with them. I mean, that's what's happened with like the levy and other things that were happening last year. We started talking, I think, I remember Representative Hans was in your office and we were talking to him about this too. So I think it's very important that we continue to have those conversations.
A lot of people like to hear the states try to reduce my taxes. The thing they don't do a good job of explaining is if we do that, then you're not gonna have the same level of services locally anymore that you're used to having. And that's the part people don't understand. Oh yeah, I want my taxes lowered, I want my taxes lowered. But then when all the cuts get made, then people start bitching about, well, why don't we have this anymore? Why don't we have that anymore? Well, because the revenue's gone. That's the disconnect with a lot of people.
With the local option sales tax, I think one of the other things that's really important as we start to talk about this and it's going to be on the ballot, I think it's really important too that we are, that Travis is really, we have a positive social media campaign around it. I also think that if, I understand like the breakup, like changing the breakup. I think that, I think we should look at that. My question about if we say like so much percent for maintenance repair, again, we promote that on social media, I think our, well, I think our, you're gonna be busy because I think this campaign is very important. But is it, are you recommending that we be more specific with how we say like that if we go 2080 or whatever?
Yeah, it's just a suggestion for you to consider. What it does is, is it gives it a more concise use. When you say streets and sewers, being that it's vague, you know, some people might look at it and says, well, streets and sewer improvements, they can be, they can be paying wages out of that versus the actual infrastructure. Whereas with it being more precise, it's, it's...
Maintenance repair.
Maintenance repair, right?
Makes it more transparent.
I would like to see...
You're right, but what I'm saying is the public could look at it differently if it's vague. When you're more precise on what you're actually using it for, it's, it can be six of one, half it, dozen of another, but at the same time, it could be something that could be, help us promote the referendum.
And it helps define for people where their property tax money, what's it being used for.
And then I'd like to see us have a closer look at what has been expended for sewers and that kind of thing versus streets. And so we don't cut somebody's throat inadvertently, it's too vague for me. I mean, if sewer walks up and says, I need all of it, streets gets nothing, I don't know what's left you got.
Kind of like, right now, like Sewer Fund has their sewer rates. It funds the whole operation of that, plus we have a little bit left over for construction. Road use funds all of the public works, or a little bit left over for construction. And loss just kind of fills in the gap, whatever, whatever they have left over plus loss is what we used to build the streets and sewers. And honestly, if it gets cut, either we're slowing down sewer separation or we're raising sewer rates.
So you're saying that even if we cut 10 percent?
It'd make a difference to half a million dollars a year that we have not to spend on that. We're spending 6 million a year now, easily probably way more, just, that's just on sewer separation, which is streets and sewers.
Yeah.
So we started getting too specific when I use, when we use loss to fund sewer separation. There are a ton of street work in there. And it's...
So I think that, I've always considered that if you're doing something with the sewer and you have to repair the street, it's all one project.
It is.
Yeah.
So we should be specific in saying that we're not paying wages out of this, that this is going toward infrastructure.
Right, but what it is is...
Maintenance and improvements, that's what we spent it on now. So that wouldn't, that wouldn't cut away anything that we spent it on in the last several years since I've been...
I'm just, I'm just saying that the more vague you are, that people could read into it. Be a little more specific. But the language passed last time and it passed by a good margin, so you could leave the language the same and continue on. In speaking with our financial advisor for the bonds, he was always under the assumption that a certain amount always went to streets and a certain amount always went to sewer. I think that what we need to do is begin doing some planning and Phil and I have talked about getting some capital improvement software. And so what it is, is in this year, this amount of money goes to streets because we've got this project coming. So we might do a little less in sewer, but we're gonna work it out so that the projects get done and the money gets split equitably to get the, what we need to get done. But that's gonna take some planning.
Yeah.
But wouldn't you be able to do some of that with this new financial platform you wanna go to? Won't these new financial platforms that you're looking at be able to do some of that?
It can, it can help with that, but the CIP software does some different things. It allows you to do a five or a 10-year projection of all your revenues and all your expenditures. And then what you can do then is say, hey, I'm plugging this in here and it uses this funds, and I'm plugging this in here to use this local option sales tax. Oh, wait a minute, I'm not gonna have enough. Can I split the years? Can I move something else around in order to get something done? And the other thing it does, it creates a project sheet for each of the projects or equipment purchases. So the council would get a chance that, okay, in this budget year, these are our capital projects. And you'll get to look at them and approve them to go into the budget. And then also get a, you know, when the tide comes to approve the expenditure, you can approve the expenditure.
They're gonna still have to do that in April or May of this year.
Well, the bottom line is, the federal government pushes sewer separation.
Right.
And has for 60 years.
Correct.
And so at some point, we've gotta have some idea of what they need, what they will settle for.
Right.
Before we can actually make a decision. And I don't want to take away from streets, I'm all about streets.
Yeah.
But we also have to keep the feds happy so that we're getting something done every year. For 30 years, we did nothing.
And Atomo was not unique in that situation.
Oh, that's right.
No, we're only just playing branch, we're like six of the way through it.
I thought maybe I'm thinking what Larry Seals thinks a year or so ago. He told me, we're halfway through this 30-year sewer separation, we've made great progress, we're over halfway through.
I'd say the whole city, yeah. I thought at this phase.
No, the whole city.
Yeah. But I guess, I wanna agree with you, like, I mean, we, we could redo sewers and separate sewers a lot faster if we just cut out the part of the street we need to cut out, patch it back in and then go to all these sewers. But then you're left with a crappy street over it. So we'll replace the whole entire street. And lately, on this project, and Southside didn't always do this, but now like if we're cutting into a street and it's not a very good street, we're gonna replace the whole entire street, even though we don't need to just to separate the sewer.
But also the sewer and water lines are being set aside, so they're not under the street. So we don't have to tear up a brand-new street to get to a repair job on sewer and water.
A lot of the water and storm sewer is outside of the street now. Santer is usually down the middle of the street, so.
So council, again, you'd ask like, are we gonna treat these two separate? And yes, we can address them both separately. But I think part of what Cole's staff somewhere was talking about was also looking at, we don't want to take anything away from streets or sewers or the dollars that go to that. And that's where that other, that piece of franchise fee, it doesn't have to be decided tonight because it's the local option sales tax ballot language. But at some point in the future, if we're looking at additional revenue, that may have to be on the table either for specifically streets. Because if you look at franchise fees and if council says we're gonna increase it a half percent or up to the full two was there, everything starts over. A revenue purpose statement has to be established for the new dollars, the reading of the ordinances, all of that, so.
And the reason I met tonight, so because there's a lot of defined information. And so I wanted to make sure I could ask questions about this specifically before we moved on to this.
Yeah, so I'm saying, potentially tied as far as revenue and where that can go. So we're not saying, change this to 80-20 and take the money away from streets and sewers. There is some other options for that that may be eligible. Right, but...
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure, because I had some questions about this and I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, this is extremely important and we're gonna bring it up for a vote. And I understand what you're saying too about, I mean, you can go on Facebook and see how are, how are my roads being crossed. And I'm guessing you'll probably get calls about it too, you know, about like, what are you fixing? Or fix this road, that kind of thing. So I think that really underline that this doesn't go to, like you said, it fills in that gap or it doesn't go to, you know, the other things that, so I think that that's important too. But I just wanted to clarify.
Well, you mentioned that you are gonna come forward with, at a council meeting soon, with what your plans are for streets and...
Yeah, what may have going on this year, just to kind of analyze and what started when it started.
So once we get a look at what you're planning, that could answer a lot of questions for the public. But then there'll always be exceptions where somebody calls in and says, hey, I need some help over here, let's get it done. So then you have to make a decision, how much help can I give them? What can we do with that street?
And I think we're always gonna get, I mean, for the, since I've lived in Atomo, we've had roads and conditions. I mean, honestly, I would tell you all, go drive on Council Bluff's road.
And roads is always a topic in every city.
But I think that it's important for this especially that we really are pushing because this has to come to a vote. And if we lose this, this is, it'll be detrimental to our city.
And the county.
And the county, yes.
And the county is on board with having this approved as well.
I, if we think it through, I don't think we'll have a problem getting it voted in. I'm not sure that you can get away with no sunset date, I'm not sure. That will be easy to walk with.
Can that be two votes or is it just one or the other? Does, no sunset clause, or a sunset clause?
Uh, no, it's one or the other.
Okay.
Yeah.
Another thing too is if this doesn't get passed, that money going to sewer separation has to get up through sewer rates. And I wouldn't be surprised if you had a double sewer rates.
What are they at now, do you know?
They're not low.
They're not low?
If you're a city, if you're a city under a consent order, your sewer rates are not low.
What's that mean?
A consent order means...
Oh, our, okay, our consent order, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, which is, once we finish separating sewers, we'll have tons of money for streets and there'll be, you know, every issue, it'll seem like it. There's so much actually spent every year on sewer separation that...
Can that be our social media campaign? Once the sewer separation's done, we'll have tons of...
It's a long time from now.
It's a long time.
But there's a lineup in the...
There's light there, I would say we're probably halfway done, but it's still 15 years from now.
Well, we still have a lot of streets that haven't been addressed yet, so. Southside is probably almost all done.
95, well, 95, 90% is done.
And east and west and...
Northside, almost none of it's done.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so while I put in that we have to make a, pass a resolution in, in April, it could go into May, but we kind of want to be proactive and get there as soon as possible. And as I said, 90 days, the actual, actual, it's effectively 90 days because it's 84 days before the election. So it definitely has to be...
I appreciate the 90 days instead of writing on the mark, so.
Yeah.
So the resolution will be, define it for me, please.
So the resolution will be to call a special election and define the ballot language. And basically, if you're looking at the original language, there'll be a summary that says to authorize local option sale and service tax in City of Atomo, Iowa at the rate of 1% to be effective January 1, 2025. Uh, no, yeah, January 1, 2025 until December or permanent, right? And then the bottom part, which is basically repeated first, a local sale, a local sale and service tax shall be imposed in City of Atomo, Iowa at the rate of 1% to be effective January 1, 2025. Revenues from the sales and service tax shall be allocated as follows. Proposed uses of the tax, percent for property tax relief, percent for street and sewer improvements. Or if you want to get more definitive.
Now, can we come up with our, the number on how long we want to have that sales tax in there?
You can, you can set it, you can set it for five years, 10 years, 20 years, 15 years, whatever you want. A lot of people, a lot of cities when it first came out, they were doing 20 years. Because that's how long they, you know, especially if they're doing it for improvements, they figured, you know, we're gonna do four or five year, four, five-year street programs.
Okay, I, this is not a number that I'm set in stone, it's just a knee jerk, that's how I think. Phil said about 15 years for the streets and sewers to die. I think it'd be a better sales pitch if we tell them 15 years for the one cent sales tax. Because the goal is to have all the streets and sewers done in 15.
Could we make it 20 in case something bad happens?
Something bad will happen.
Right, that's right, so plan on that.
You gotta be careful, but you don't promise something that you can't lose now.
No, I said our goal, it'll be written in there, that our goal is to...
How do you get on that, 20 years?
Let me do a schedule on that.
You also are gonna have to decide whether you want to do a half a percent increase on franchise fees or you want to do a full percent, I mean...
Haven't gotten to that.
Yeah, I haven't gotten there yet.
But I mean, that's something else they gotta decide.
So, so why don't we do a, do the 20-year sunset, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do the 20-year sunset. And we'll talk about the...
Don't let me feel wrong, you only have 20 years.
Well, there's a consent period, we have to renegotiate with the EPA coming up because we're not gonna meet our first deadline.
Okay, okay.
The important thing, I think, is how the council sells this to the public. If we tell them and remind them that all the people that are coming into town paying their taxes with us, they're helping us pay our bills.
Right.
If we get nosey about it, they might not like that part of it all, so.
Right.
I don't think you're gonna have problems with the one cent sales tax. You've got a lot of problems with the franchise.
Just a sec, let's, I'm sorry, I interrupted. Let's finish the language before we talk about franchise fees.
So, so I think what it is, we'll come back to the ballot language after we have a discussion on franchise fee because that discussion may affect what percentage you want on the ballot, okay? So, the current gas mileage franchise fees are both set at 3%. Based on our current fiscal year 25 projections, a half a percent increase would generate an additional $233,334 in revenue. And a full 1% would be $466,667. Use of the franchise fees is limited to the revenue purchase, purpose statement adopted by the city council and would be property tax relief, repair, remediation, restoration, cleanup, replacement, and improvement of existing public improvements and other public property, buildings and facilities. Projects designed to prevent or mitigate future disasters as defined in Iowa Code 29(c)(2). Energy conservation measures for low-income homeowners, low-income energy assistance programs and weatherization programs. Public safety including the equipment of fire, police, emergency services, sanitation, street, Public safety including the equipment of fire, police, emergency services, sanitation, street and civil defense departments. The establishment, construction, reconstruction, repair, equipping, remodeling and extension of public works, public utilities and public transportation systems. The construction, reconstruction, repair of streets, highways, bridges, sidewalks, pedestrian, underpasses and overpasses, street lighting fixtures and public grounds and the acquisition of real estate needed for such purposes. Property tax abatements, building permit fee abatements, the abatement of other fees for property damage in, by a disaster as defined, as defined in section twenty-nine C point two. And economic development activities at, uh, and projects. Uh, an increase in the franchise fee would be an increase, the amount a customer would pay for gas and electric. The franchise could be frozen for a certain number of years to ensure no further increases, uh, in the immediate future. I know that has been done, they've locked it in for five years and said, we're not gonna make any more changes for five years. We're gonna have to live with the, the, um, uh, money that generates off of that. Uh, additionally, the fees can be adjusted down at a certain time, should the fees exceed what is necessary. That's not, you know, um, the local option sales tax is gonna be locked in for twenty years, for the twenty years for the purpose of what we say they are and it's at one percent, nobody goes less than one percent, by the way. Um, but the franchise fee can be adjusted depending upon the need.
So this is probably a question more for Phil, cause you weren't here last year. So if A through I is the only things that you can use franchise fees for, where has the bulk of the money been used so far that we generated in franchise fees for that A through I?
Good question. Uh, we had the first dollars that came in went to capital improvements for buildings, city hall project.
Right.
Uh, and then this current fiscal year, it would be in, uh, public safety, cleaning, equipping of fire, police, et cetera. So basically, um, I guess the, the one thing there is the property tax relief was not in the revenue purpose statement. Um, cause if you do that, you have to establish a certain percentage of dollar threshold for that. But public safety within the general fund, the dollars that came into that, it had the same effect of property tax relief. It paid for the public safety aspect of that, that then the taxes that would've paid for that went to pay for other functions in the budget.
And then we use some of that money to help with economic development, like retail strategies?
Uh, very small amount.
Right, a hundred and thirty thousand, I think is what they used it for.
That's what it was, yeah.
Yeah.
So the only place you can really use franchise fees for staff is if you tie it to the public safety departments, right? That's the only place you can use it for staff. That's, that's the only thing that, um, I mean, unless you establish the property tax relief and end up percentage and dollar threshold for that, um, but we didn't do that as far as what was supposed to happen the last time.
Phil, is D part of our income?
Yeah, everything except property tax relief was included. Well, I, I mean, if we had a program for that, I don't know that we have programs to do for that.
What percentage of the franchise fees went to getting the salaries up, up to par and hiring people that, um, departments that were low of people, because that's what we sold the city on, why we did the franchise.
Yeah, yeah, directly, nothing, indirectly, it'll help with that. The money, the money came in and allowed us to use it over here and then the, the, what we were gonna spend over here out of property taxes and other revenues, we were able to, um, expend on the salaries.
Freed it up.
Freed it up.
Freed it up in the general fund to allow us to do this thing.
So we, I mean, like technically, directly, we can't say we're gonna hire a parks employee and we're gonna use franchise fee to do that, because that's not a legal purpose.
Didn't really free it up if we're wanting to ask them to pay more now, even more.
Well, the thing that I'm gonna tell you is, 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 uh, franchise fees are, are the only mechanism left that the legislature has given us to create new revenues. We can do things to increase other revenues, such, you know, we can, we can work on expanding the city. We can work on getting more people in the city, we can try to draw more people in for more sales tax. But if we directly wanna be able to say, hey, we're going to do this and it results in additional revenue, this is the only mechanism left. And what I will tell you is, is that, uh, if we don't do something at some point, and it may not be in fiscal year twenty-eight when revenues get cut, we may be able to, through attrition and efficiencies, be able to cut, but at some point, you're gonna have to find a new revenue source.
Or cut expenses.
I said, I said, but, but what I've said is, is, is that, you know, we're gonna look at new efficiencies and attrition or whatever else in order to get us, you know, save as much as we can in expenditures. But what I will tell you is that if you wanna continue service levels at a certain level.
And we continue to grow as a city.
Right.
You, you can't be cutting that stuff, right?
Well, wouldn't we save money, as, I know this isn't on the agenda, but the, the Agassi building, that, that gentleman's gonna ask for eighty percent of not paying taxes for fifteen years. Okay, if we finally say, okay, now that's money we're taking out of the general fund, even though it wasn't in there yet. But that's part of the property taxes, that's what we keep talking about, but yet we keep giving people all this.
We're not, we're not, we're only getting twenty, what is it, twenty-five hundred right now and it would increase significantly if that is built on.
Right, but what I'm saying is, we could use eighty percent of that money.
But if it's not built on, we can't use it, right? So right now it's only bringing in, I think, twenty-five hundred dollars. So if it's not built on, then we don't have any, even, that doesn't increase at all.
So, so my question is, is, is that proposed as a tax abatement or a tax increment financing?
It's under urban renewal.
Under urban renewal. If, okay, first, the, the project hasn't been established, he, he's looking for a letter of intent from the city to be able to build this project in an urban renewal area and get the tax rebate, eighty percent value back and a tax rebate. Right, okay. Of the new value. Right, of the new value. So, the legislature as part of seven eighteen has said that any developer agreements has to have a minimum assessment agreement. Okay, so we could go in there and say, um, okay, your minimum assessment is this, and based upon that minimum assessment, um, you'll get, you know, how or much back in, in a, in a rebate. But anything that comes in, you know, if you're, if that property is valued higher than that, that is going to get moved back into the taxing agencies', um, uh, valuations. So if, if, if we go out and say, hey, your minimum value is a million dollars, but the assessor comes back and says, no, it's a million and a half. We'll take the tip on the million dollars, do what we need to do for the development agreement, but on the half million, that's gonna get, that valuation's gonna be put back into ours, the schools and the counties and everybody else's valuations.
Unless you're penalized for it because you're going over that threshold.
No, I don't think you get, no, if, if they, they can't control the valuations and I mean, it's valued more than that, then, um.
Well, then how are they penalizing us this year when our valuation's up over that eight percent?
Oh, I, oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah.
That's exactly what they did.
I think that we just have to be, um, clear that, um, something that is not, and I think, um, something that's not built on the, we're only getting a very low amount and when it's built on, then the, that valuation goes up. And so then we receive, even if it's, again, good or bad, even if it's twenty percent, thirty percent, it's still better than the original number two, so.
If the development happens without any agreement, it happens regardless, then yes, you're correct. That eighty percent that would go to the city, a hundred percent of it would go to the city instead of eighty percent going to developer, assuming that he builds anyway. Then you are.
That's what I'm saying, because all this, this part of the meeting here is stressful because we're just about hurt, but we're about hurt. We can negotiate with the developer and say, hey, here's the situation we're in city-wise and you're fixing to build here to make some money from it, but here's the downhill slide we're on. And if we keep doing this, it's not.
The, the, what I will tell you is that it's a catch twenty-two.
I understand that, but we're, we're on the other bottom, bottom end of the twenty-two.
Well, I, I, yeah, it's, it's just that, i- if you're not in one of the metro areas, right? Metro areas, they do not give any incentives for, for housing and development. I mean, they're, you're right, they don't have to, right? But the vast majority, you know, there's nine hundred and some, uh, cities in Iowa, right? And the vast majority of them are not near those urban counties, right? Uh, and the only way you can get somebody to build anything is you have to give them the incentives.
No, I'm all for giving incentives, I'm seriously, I'm all for that, you're just talking how much. I'm talking about how much.
Right.
Well, the thing that I think we're in trouble with, and I may be wrong, is that I don't think you can take one block out of an area that's not TIF'd and TIF' it. I don't think you can isolate a small piece of property for anyone's benefit, which is less of a construction vision, and call it TIF and put them into the TIF program. I think that's illegal. I think the state will come down on us and say, what do you think you're doing?
Um, that is something I can't answer right now without more information, but, um, where the state gets upset is when a community uses tax increment financing to build a library or a aquatic center or something like that, right? Um, I know like the, the, the city of Puxley at one point was, um, their entire community was under an urban renewal and, and TIF. And the city of Ames, uh, needed to build a power line, uh, because they generate their own power and they needed to build this power line. And so they were gonna come in and eminent domain some of, of the area. And the city administrator at the time went to the city of Ames and said, you can't do that, that's how I pay for things, is tax increment financing, right? Responsible communities always look at it and say, okay, this is our area, these are the projects we're gonna do. And, you know, when it's done, the tax, the, the valuation goes back to all the taxing entities.
Well, the original TIF definition, I think, was to talk about upgrading blighted areas and improving your city.
Right.
That's where I think we're just, we're stepping out of bounds here. It's not a blinded area, but it is a single area out of an entire part of the city that we're calling TIF.
Well, there, and I think there've been some revisions to TIF law over time.
Yeah.
Uh, and expansions of, of some of that, for economic development and for other things. I can get you a legal opinion on that, cause I know you mentioned that to me before. The attorneys were involved when that was all drafted previously, so I'm confident that they wouldn't have done something that was illegal if they couldn't have done, but we can get a legal opinion on that particular side, because that will be coming up for the next meeting, I believe.
Okay, that'd be great. I've, I've been wrong before, once, sixty-two years ago when I said yes, but beyond that.
Congratulations to the young man.
So, um, you don't have to decide anything on the franchise fee, do you? But keep that in your mind when we now go back to discuss the ballot language. And do you want to adjust, um, the distribution?
We need to talk about it at least.
Right, yeah.
What does that do to you, Philip? If we go down to the eighty percent?
It just lengthens the amount of time it takes to separate the sewers and lowers the volume and capacity we'll have. I believe we're gonna do SRF on the division three. I don't know what's left over after that ninety percent, so, but I think he wants to use loss instead of sewer revenues to pay it back.
That was one of the things they, they want to talk about. Yeah, they're one of the options, right?
So will lower the amount if they're all expand or extend the time?
Yeah, because you won't have the bond capacity, right? We've cash flowed a lot. Like, we did all of division one, division one is of Iowa and division two, all cash flow, no debt at all. But division three is another twelve million, we're gonna have to get SRF for that.
Let me also just, um, preface that, let's see. Tim Oswald was, had talked with Cole about all of this. So this, aside from the timing of the local option sales tax on the ballot, necessary to put it on the ballot, this stuff was all discussed, so he'd be aware of the long-term plans for funding for streets, sewers, all of that.
Yeah, I don't know what percentage would add to these obligations from loss, but I know it's.
Well, when, when I spoke with Tim, he, again, he was under the assumption that a certain amount always had to go to streets and a certain amount always had to go to sewer. So he knows what the SRF is, and so he says, well, he says, for a while, there's gonna be a shift to how much is going to the sewers to get stuff done, right? Uh, and again, that's gonna, that, that all goes back to the plans that we have to make, unfortunately, because we can't, we're not gonna have the plan ready before we have to have this on a ballot.
And we've talked about other, I guess I said sewer rates have to go up. We threw around other ideas too for sewer rates. Revenue increases there without having to raise rates for everybody. One of them was apartments, a lot of the apartments won't pay one base charge, even though there's like six separate housing units there. Should they pay six instead of the one, that's something that was looked at as well. That won't increase sewer rates for single-family homes at all. But it might be fair, that's up to.
I guess everybody's paying a portion of it.
Yeah, so you don't have, yeah, like I said, you're six housing units, you pay six base charges, six families right there. Something to think about might come up in the next month or two.
But the conversation or possibility of adjusting percentage, that was part of the conversation that Tim had with, with Cole.
Right.
As far as looking at and giving you as council members the option for the ballot language and trying to get some additional revenue into the general.
I think streets and sewers are fortunate, because we have separate funding sources that for now are healthy. Healthy for operations, then you have what's left over to use for capital improvements, that's the, that's where it impacts borrowers. So what's left for capital improvements, so you won't have to cut compositions or anything like that if you lower it up to sewer, streets.
Okay. So if we, so if we increase, let's say to ten to, or twenty, so twenty-eighty, is there still that recommendation to increase by five, a point five percent too?
Um, there was no recommendation on the franchise fee.
Oh, it was just.
It was for, it was for information and discussion. And again, it goes back to, um, at some point. Yeah, and we're going to have to have that conversation, because as many efficiencies and, and reductions that we can make, at some point, you're not gonna be able to make anymore and you're gonna need a, a, a new source of revenue and the other revenue sources are not growing fast enough to keep up with even the, um, uh, uh, consumer price index. Unless we can outpace the growth, yes?
So, thinking long-term, if, if I understand you correctly, and I think I'm, I'm getting what you're saying now, but say the council votes to just move it up to five percent, okay?
Which one, sorry?
Franchise, franchise.
Franchise fees, okay, and this is just hypothetically. Okay, if that's our last chance of resources, then you can't go past five percent.
Right, without a vote, without a vote to the people, you have to take it to the people.
All right, we'll see how that goes. So what I'm saying is, what, we should not rely just on them franchise fees, cause that's not gonna solve our problems.
Do we have to do a full point five percent?
You can go at whatever fraction that you want, you can go at a quarter percent. I put five percent in there because it came close to, it came close to making up what Jessica had projected in today's dollars.
When you say five percent, you're talking half a percent.
Half a percent, yeah, it's a half, half, half a percent.
Yeah, yeah.
I miss a decimal point, I miss a decimal point once in a while, so.
Are we locked into a specific number of years at the current rate that we're at?
We're not.
No, uh, no, not. Well, maybe you can adjust the rate, but you cannot exceed the twenty, yeah. Whatever the balance of the, of the franchise fee has, right?
Well, and this is ever to bridge that gap for when our, like.
Yeah, we could go, we can go down if we had enough resources to allow us to do that. Or we could change it to go up in that time period if it necessitated and.
And the time period is twenty-five years, right?
Uh, that, that would be the maximum, we're within that, uh, at the time. Uh that that would be the maximum, we're within that uh at the time.
I will say the original timeframe.
Yes, yeah, I think we're at, we're at twenty-something years, twenty-three?
Yeah. There's been some discussion already too, that the state's looking at maybe taking on the franchise fees and stuff.
Well, let's not talk about that right now.
Well, I'm just saying, all you can, all you can do is make decisions. All you can do is make decisions based on what you can do now, I'm just saying, this stuff could all change from year to year. It can always change.
What I'm gonna tell you is the legislature doesn't like how cities actually survive.
No, they don't, they're trying to limit how cities and counties can generate their own revenue.
Right.
And it's getting worse and worse and worse. To your point, yes, it wasn't saying that we need to um adjust franchise fees or we're even recommending it today. It might be two years from now, it might, you know, so we're just saying, in terms of how it impacts the local option sales tax and the revenue into the general fund, that that would be an offset to that, saying that if we move to twenty percent, the twenty-eighty split, and then three years from now, we needed more money for sewer or for streets, that additional half percent or whatever franchise fees could be used specifically for streets to backfill what was going in from local option sales taxes. As an option, as, you know, giving you all the options in front of you.
Now, the city doesn't get all of the lost tax, right? They share that with someone else.
Well, okay, so um what it is, is when they proposed the local option sales tax, the legislature at the time was a little more rural than it is now. And the rural legislators thought, wait a minute, the county, out in the county doesn't generate enough tax to make it worthwhile. So they came up with a a formula based upon, first one is based upon population, and then the second step is based upon uh amount of general, your your general fund, right? And then they throw you into that that formula, and then they calculate it out, and that's what you get. So um the amount of sales tax that we generate is actually good portion of it is going out to not only the county, but some of the smaller communities as well. Without us with the sales tax, those other communities in the county will get way less.
So the question is again, what do we get? What do we get? The city of Atumla?
Oh, what do we get? Uh.
What do we get?
Uh, the projected for this year is four point five million.
Okay.
And I think we get about seventy percent of that amount, seventy-three percent or so, I think, and then the remaining twenty-seven is split between county and the like Blakesburg and Eddieville and the other, yeah, smaller communities within the county. They all got some percentages of that. So we're generating, we are generating more than four point five million within the city of Atumla. But that's what they allocate.
That's what we're limited to.
That's what we're limited to.
We bought money.
What I, what I will tell you is, is that when you instituted the franchise fee, you get the full one percent off of the utilities, because you can't charge, now charge the local option sales tax on the utilities of the instituted franchise fee. So you do get that full one um penny um from the franchise fee.
Wasn't that why the county was up in arms?
That's what they were, was they lost that fraction for gas and electricity.
Fairfield two, Spithy County, did a one percent franchise fee, so they can get all the money.
Wow. Wow, okay.
Okay.
Um, regards to the ballot language, was there a percentage split that you're comfortable with?
So explain to me the reasoning that we're even talking about a split instead of keeping it. Are you trying to say if things get hard in a different department, then that money can go to that?
Well, well, what I'm saying is, is that right now, ten percent goes to property tax relief, and that um because of what the state has done and growth rates and everything else, our general fund is starting to receive less and less funds while still having the same obligations. And that a change in the split can help shore up the general fund a little bit.
So it would just delay the process?
It 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 could, depending upon how things are planned.
So what does eighty-twenty, or eighty and twenty, yeah, eighty-twenty, what does that do for property taxes?
So, so for um for the general fund, it would generate uh four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional funds, and it would take four hundred and fifty thousand dollars away from streets and sewers.
I don't like that idea.
But it goes to the general fund, which would help us with safety and.
That's the slush fund, general fund.
Yes.
Okay, I don't like that word either. So if we stay at ninety-ten.
It's not really a slush fund, there's only certain things that can be taken out of the general fund.
We stay at ninety-ten, everything stays the same, is that correct?
Everything, everything will will stay the same, the 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 the, based upon the four and a half million, the the, you know, those departments will still get, or those funds will still get the 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 same amount. But you're putting the general fund in a position where um there's going to be some hard decisions um very, very shortly.
So I think what, kind of what I'm seeing is that if we, we can look at a cut, or we can, we can look at keeping it the same, you'll be able to complete your projects, um not with a potential delay, and then we're gonna be sitting here saying, who are we, what are we cutting? What services, what positions potentially are we cutting? Or we could, if we do eighty-twenty, we could potentially delay, and I think I heard you say that there's not gonna have to be cuts to people, and.
Well, eighty, no, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to cut you off.
Oh, yeah, and so, and then we wouldn't have to, so it could potentially delay your project, so twenty years instead of fifteen on the sunrise. And then we're potentially not having to have hard conversations here about what services are we cutting, correct? Is that kind of, is my understanding?
Well, I I think that, I think we're gonna have those discussions anyway. Because.
It's not as extreme.
So here's, here's one of the things that I think Cole was trying to say is, we had a general fund, which includes police, fire, parks, administration, planning, all of those departments. It also helped um uh offset cemetery costs, library, Bridgeview Center.
The levy.
The levy.
The levy, and now that's in addition.
Yeah. Not the tax levy.
In addition to money that was levied for library at twenty-seven cents, for Bridgeview Center thirteen and a half cents, for the emergency fund at twenty-seven cents, those amounts are now going to get rolled into the general fund. And so in addition to what we were already supporting those, we're now gonna have less revenue to support those, which means we're going to have to find money to continue operations at the same level, whether it's the library or some other department, whether it's what we support with Bridgeview Center, or do we attempt to look at shutting it down? And I'm not saying it to be fearful or anything, not to wash the monument thing, but we are paying a lot of money to keep that operating at the level that operates at, where is that revenue gonna come from? It, and and you say that 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 what it does is, is it saves jobs. What I will tell you is, is that it helps to maintain services.
Yes.
Okay, because there's more to the services we provide than just the jobs. There's the equipment, there's, there's the building, I mean, so um and and like I said, we're going to have to look at all of it anyway, it's just, do we cut a little deeper? Or can we cut a little less and?
And we're cutting sooner or.
Or sooner or later, too.
Yeah, when you do cut staff, though, you are cutting services, they're linked, they're linked together.
Right.
The other thing, if you go with eighty-twenty, you can tell your people in Atumla, we're helping with property tax relief. You're not gonna get ten percent property tax relief, you're gonna get twenty percent property tax relief. So that's a positive, go in the eighty-twenty. 'Cause our property taxes are really high in local county, people complain about that all the time, including me. Mine keep going up about a thousand every year, it's ridiculous.
And then there are some properties in our community that pay no property tax.
That's true too.
And that's about thirty-five percent.
Yeah. I'm not trying to say anything about the Bridge Church, but when they bought the North High East Door, there's gonna be millions of property tax dollars that no longer are gonna be there, 'cause it's a church, they don't have to pay property taxes.
They do have to pay franchise fees.
Yeah, they do have to do that. I'm not against the Bridge Church, but I'm just saying, kind of what Keith said.
Or churches in general, because a lot of them is for sale.
Places that don't pay taxes.
And they had opportunity that could have to buy it, as far as that goes.
I think there's a possibility, and I haven't voiced this with anyone at all, and I don't, I'm not wearing a vest, so don't shoot me. But there is a possibility of looking at the church properties and deciding if their parking lots could be taxable. I don't know what rate, something that they're, because churches have a lot of space, a lot of property is covered by concrete for the benefit of their people, and those people, basically, because they're exempt for now, are not paying my property tax. So that's all, that's just a statement.
We didn't have it on here, but one of the things that is subject to future conversation.
I was, I was biting my tongue, 'cause I didn't wanna muddy the waters. So, and and this is just along your point. It's along your point, so um there is, if you wanted to establish a stormwater utility.
Stormwater utility.
Right, now, that money could go towards sewer separation, because we're having to, you know, do that. There's two methods for doing, and everybody pays a stormwater utility fee. Is you can take the different classes of property and you can say, every month you're going to pay this fee, okay? And it generates a X amount that you can budget in. The other method, which takes a lot more implementation, is you go out and you establish what an average residential lot is. So let's say it's point seven-five acres, and that becomes your unit. Yeah, so that becomes your unit. All residential properties will pay one unit, no matter if they're less than the point seven-five or larger than the point seven-five, but they pay one unit. All other properties, churches, commercial, um industrial, they will pay based upon the size of their lot, okay? So if their lot is seventy acres, you're gonna take seventy times your residential unit rate, and that comes out to what they would pay. Now, caveat to that is, is that you build in incentives, because what it is, is you're wanting to lessen the impact upon the the storm sewer, right? You wanna delay or get that water to go somewhere else. So if they put in methods to detain, retain, or divert, you can then give them credits based upon how much water they retain, detain, or divert.
So if some of our bigger companies in town, if they're doing things like this, then they could get credit back, so they're not.
So they're not paying as much on their storm sewer.
It seems to me like we got into a deal with Walmart, Super Bowl, like that, where they would agree to do certain things for water conservation, and in exchange for that, they would be, that tax would be reduced.
Right, and and what I will tell you is, is that because there is a combined sewer operations here, that um the ordinance should state that any new construction of a commercial or industrial lot contains some sort of mitigation to retain, detain, or divert from the storm sewer. I mean, it can be simple enough as putting in bioswales, it can be a retention pond, it can be um a variety of different things. It can be rerouting the storm sewers that's on their property to go, instead of going into our system, directly into a waste stream or a water stream.
So any, any new development, opening or already happened, detained.
Right, we have, yes.
John Deere already spent like eight million dollars separating their storehouse, and they'll be up in arms if they're not exempt.
So they could be, so they could potentially have those incentives that are already built in.
Yes, yes.
Don't they use the Black Lake for their purposes?
Yeah, and they're also, I mean, like.
JBS has some things that's.
Well, and as I said, we're not, we're not suggesting doing this at all, but to your point, there are options, if it's ever anything that we seriously wanted to explore. And I think the cities looked at it to some degree in the past.
They have, and it was, John Deere was the first one in line to say, no, it's, they didn't wanna, because they've spent all that money and.
Sure.
But then those would be some of the incentives that could already be built in and say, well, you've done the money, you've done the work here.
Right.
And if it is something where we would ever just look, and I think we bring that to the table and work on that as part of the exemption, because of what they've already done.
So ballot language.
I vote for ballot language, at what percent? I personally would like to see it stay where it is.
I would like to see it go to eighty-twenty. I think that helps us delay some conversation, or well, it helps per, I understand it delays your aspect, but I think it also assists with some of the changes that we need to have.
I would also add about that, it seems like we are beginning the planning process to offset some of the the funding that you won't be receiving for streets and sewers anymore, when we do the change in language, if we do the change in language, I should say. But it will need to happen at some point, or we need money from somewhere.
That's a tough one, but they're all gonna be tough from here on out. I'm thinking eighty-twenty, just because of the situation. It saves the inevitable quite more than I said.
It delays the inevitable. Delays the inevitable, but um I, I am making a commitment with this year's, uh this upcoming budget, that, and you're not gonna be the only one that gets this message, or you two are not gonna be the only ones that get this message, what's in your budget is in your budget. So if you come in and say, hey, I need some more money for this, I'm gonna look at you and say, where are you gonna take it from? Okay, um because uh um things are getting tight. My pledge back to the department heads is that we're going to work with them to come up with ways to get done what they need to get done in a effective and efficient manner, which would be doing some of the planning and other things to look at where we need to be and where we want to be.
Well, I have a plan too, on what projects they're willing to bond for too, that's gonna help those departments too, depending on how many of those bonding projects they're willing to recruit and make, when they have to get that decided.
But what does, what does that deter a budget to, to accept the bonding when we're already looking at more than that?
Jessica said, the city of Atumla has the full bonding capacity to do all those projects, if you guys wanna do them all, she already told you that.
That's not free money, that's.
No, no, I know, but those are all, but those are all projects that the department has felt they really needed to have done in their various departments. But the the levy rate that we submitted as part of the um new formula, right? Our levy rate goes down and the property taxes on property go down. According to the form, you you, you know, uh based upon a hundred thousand dollars of residential value, I can't remember, it's, it, was it six hundred or nine hundred or, I can't remember, but you know, that's when it's going down, you get a savings. Now, when it comes to the industrial side, that whole convoluted formula mess, so.
Mr. Hoffman, you haven't spoken yet.
I'm taking good notes, I may insert them in my head here, I'm just processing them. The split you'd be willing to support?
Eighty-twenty?
Well, that's a few.
No, I mean, that's what you're asking me, right, yeah.
Yeah, whatever the split is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we have further discussion?
Well.
Eighty, yeah, like.
Yeah, I expect, I expect when the resolution comes out, you can have.
Eighty-twenty.
Could be eighty-five, fifteen?
So, yeah, so what it is, is I'll prepare the resolution for eighty-twenty, and then you can always amend the, you know, the resolution at council to change the percentage, um however you want. But I just needed something in order to get, get it on the agenda.
Yeah, 'cause I could change my mind too.
When you post this, can you make, like, put a big alert, like, watch this meeting, so that, like, people understand the conversations that we've had to, like?
I'll probably put a definite time as to when the switch is over. I'll probably put a definite time as to when it switches over from, uh.
Yeah, yeah, perfect, thank you.
Over to the tax-related items.
I just think that this whole thing is important for our, I mean, this hasn't been great, like, it's been great conversation, but it hasn't been great conver.
So, going back to the eighty, twenty, we really shouldn't have probably asked us what we're, 'cause I may not stick with the eighty, twenty by the time I get more time to think about it.
And that's fine.
Because you could've came up with that number irregardless.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, without really asking us, right? So, yeah, I mean.
But it kinda like, well, it might get approved.
That's what I was, that's what I was saying, that's why I don't have the time to process it.
Yeah, and that's fine, and that's fine, but what it is, is, is by setting that at eighty, twenty on the resolution, and, um, I'll put it on for April sixteenth, so you get full month to mull it over. We'll put it on for the sixteenth, and then at that point, you can have, you know, a broader conversation, and then, like I said, you can always amend the resolution one way or the other.
I think the other thing that's really important too, and I think that my understanding of why, um, having a conversation about the ten and the ninety, the fifteen and the eighty-five and the eighty, twenty, or the twenty and eighty, also shows, like, this is the reality of each situation. And so I think that that's important to remember too, of the reality of each situation, so, as we go through, and I think that led to really good conversation tonight too, so.
Well, and what he drafted at is what's going to be in the packet and all of that, and so it's, I'd say it's probably much easier to go from eighty, twenty, if it reduces to eighty-five, fifteen, or even the ninety, ten rule right now, rather than having it printed at ninety, ten, and all of a sudden it gets to be, say, oh, let's go eighty, twenty. And that.
Agreed.
And, and I didn't want to present that at a council meeting, because we would be doing this.
Yeah, and I think that's important, and have their conversation right now.
Yeah.
So, that's why I was saying, like, I hope too, that we can kind of push that too, because I think everyone needs to hear this conversation, so. Yeah, TikTok?
TikTok, that'd be great.
Now, get TikTok over. It would really be nice if the chambers would be full of interested citizens that would like to hear and have possible input.
You know who else would be great to have there? Our representatives, while we're having these conversations too. So if we have contacts with them, maybe we should flood our, um, email, or have, call them up, ask them to come, that way I can, this is really important conversation.
They'll be done by then, won't they? I don't know what sign die is this year, I think this is a short one, isn't it?
We should.
Yeah. Are you, you here Monday? What's that? You here Monday?
They're.
They might, yeah, I'll be here Monday, so.
Work sessions.
Can I hit you up for about a half hour, I have a meeting with Phil.
You're getting kind of legislative form.
Yeah, I think I, I'm down, uh.
Are we done?
I'm down eleven-thirty, or ten-thirty.
Okay. Is there anything else that anybody wants to bring up before we adjourn tonight?
No, I'm saying.
Oh, and if anybody wants to come in and talk to me individually, or talk to Phil, you all talk to Phil individually, but if you want to talk to me individually about this, um, I'm available.
Okay, if there's no other business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the work session.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McTire?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Oden?
Yes.
Councilmember Galway?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.